But it's on now. You're a reporter? Glad we dodged last night if that's all we did was sit around and read the budget for three hours. That was a good one to miss. Because it was that and pay- and pay. We've heard those things. Keep it reasonable. Are you ready for your company? We've got to take the power, pull down another battery. You too. Take what the day brings. I said we missed a good one last night. Rod was saying I just... Everybody in here has got all mouthy about that much money. For hours, like, glad we missed it. Feeling well?
Not any better than I'd split, I'm happy to be too happy. The bad news is, there's nothing to split that.
Yeah, there's always a downside.
I had my, uh... Surgery fund.
Obviously.
My vision went from 2080 to 2025 the first day. 2020 the second day, and they think it's either gonna be 2015 or 2010.
And what'd you have done exactly then?
They took the cataract out. It had been there for 42 years. Remember the thing they said, "Don't throw rocks, some little kid will get hit in the eye?" I'm the kid you wanted to meet. I got hit in the eye at 20 years old. With a piece of coral rock.
And you've had a cataract ever since?
I've had a cataract ever since. And the whole world has changed. Everything, like the colors in the shirts and everything like that, are like the, the screen up there.
You've got it all.
They're just all bright. And, uh, the only thing that's kinda weird is like if I look at you and I close this eye, you're a certain size. When I open this eye, you get bigger.
The focus isn't back yet.
No, no, no. It's... This one is magnifying more than 2020. So, you're this big, and then you're this big. You're this big, then you're this big. But when the two eyes were open, for about two days, it was a little weird.
Yeah, but now it's blended there. Okay.
Yeah. Uh, 2030 in this eye. 2020 in this eye, but when I open up both eyes, it's 2015.
Man.
So, it's pretty cool.
Congratulations.
Pretty cool. It's, uh... It's weird. It's weird. I can honestly say, nothing looks like I thought it looked like. Some people better, and some not.
There you go. But at least you're seeing it clearly now.
It's in the... Yeah. I can see clearly now. The fog is gone.
Fantastic. That's great. I'd like to hear that. That's good. Not a problem.
But anyway, I just thought I'd let you know. I just put some more water.
Oh, great. I have a handful of them at the house. Well, it'll bring in the blood, not the gas.
All right, here's the, uh... Meeting next door. Chairman. And it's the... The commissioners are speaking on the spot.
All right, my turn to make that one. All right, thank you. Can you head up? Hey, how are you? The next chamber man. Well, you just said the next chamber commander, meaning the Fulton County Commissioner, whatever Commissioner's there, be there talking about this. From a business standpoint, it'd be a good thing to be there, be seen, as far as being able to make... Network. That need to grow a business would be a good thing to do. Our business has grown about all year. We're getting more popular. We're gonna have to start doing commentary on you too. So, we've only got, um... We've only got, um... Three, including the mayor's. Even though... Which means they could take care of some business with the vote of one to another. I'm just saying, they could. They won't get a little bit too...
Your hand mine, that's... We need collecting layers on this. Where we go, there's never a wall.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, if everybody can find a seat. I'll call our June 7th, uh... Work session meeting to order. Seems like just yesterday we were here. Roll call will reflect that Alderman Bar has fallen ill, and I'll be here tonight, and Councilman Powell is, uh... Imagine a sandy beach being better than coming to a council meeting, so...
He said his wife's scheduled to be here.
Uh-huh. So, he's sitting on a beach, and Alderman Bar's not feeling well, so we have a skeleton crew council tonight.
So, there's a couple of extra seats if y'all wanna be on it.
If you would, technically, get yourself on and make sure it's turned on the silent or vibration position. And, uh, at this time, we'll... We've modified the agenda just a little bit, uh, as far as public comments go. We will take, uh... Wait a minute, I'm looking... Yeah. We will look the floor up for any public comments at this time. Doesn't necessarily have to be on agenda items. It could be on anything you'd like to talk about. So, I'll start on my right. Anybody have some comments or questions? On my left, Anne? You can.
I have a question or concerns about CID. You know, that hangover before, uh... Now it's going to put a... That one, small businesses, if they're the next thing. I can't decide if the main street is enclosed in that area or not. Or is it was written out, remember before? That was written out.
We've asked that it be written out.
Well, I... Before we sign anything, I hope you see that it is. Because, you know, you and I both... We agreed on that.
We did. But the problem is, when businesses join that, it's outside of city control.
Yeah, but it... That's fine. But it has to be written in.
The boundaries.
Yeah, the boundaries. So, if they're not in the boundaries...
We ask that they not go through the downtown area.
The only one side in Hurwood and Virginia Avenue gets support limits. And even some of those have backed out. You know, I think for cities that haven't got as many things going on as us, a CID's great, but in our situation, I don't...
I don't see a...
We don't have a representative here for it, but I'm not furtive at all. Go ahead.
We discussed the board, the very same thing, but even when that most purpose is here, what are they going to do for us?
But this is an expansion of CID. Now, before, we were talking about creating our own. This is an expansion, and the rules are a little bit different. On the expansion of the system.
But then that board, even though we have a rep on that board, the board decides what project is done. It's my understanding.
That's correct.
We have already done so much, but, and we had before, when they came in here, all they said they were going... That I got out of it anyway from Morse River, was that they were going to cut the 85 and the 75 entrances. And that's what they were going to do.
No, Morse River's not involved, because this is an expansion of the airport.
Yeah, I understand that, but you know, I think which way I want to say it. It all depends on what the project the council votes on, but I've got concerns about it as I did before, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Thank you, ma'am.
Because of half of them. And another thing, I want to tell you, I'm excited about the playground, Master Park Kaboom. For a long time, those kids have needed somewhere to play that has decent play equipment. So, I'm excited about that, but I also have concerns. I know, and I'm late, I know we have plenty of citizens. You have two committees, you gotta fill up 120, 130, then you gotta have 75 to come out of work that... So, you know, I'm saying, I'm approaching, telling citizens now, you know, we have to participate.
Absolutely.
We have to participate. You know, and I... Physically, I can't do all that stuff anymore. But, you know, if you want a good playground, and then I'm concerned that now, that Master Park is always graffiti, or some... I don't want to say kids are bad. You know, some troubling kids are up there, you know, and it's graffiti. So, how are we going to address the fact and keep that thing in good shape? And how are we going to hunt it? And are there going to be rules for the ages? Because see, I see kids at those swings that have...
That's part of the discussion that we had with the Kaboom when we had the conference call about Grant, was what age group... What did we set in Allen? Wasn't it older?
Five through 12.
Five through 12.
Okay, so that will be posted, there'll be rules for them following. Okay, I'm just concerned.
And Lee, I think I saw Trump's up there today, where they're cleaning up the graffiti. If y'all see graffiti, please let us know. The last thing, the work... Graffiti's like a tumor. The longer it's there, the bigger it gets. So, if you see it anywhere, or you see shoes hanging by electric wires, those are all gang signs. Please let us know, and we will respond to them immediately.
Thank you.
At North Avenue School, there's shoes hanging on the tennis court, and I asked to get a message to the principal there by getting those cut down.
Yeah, because I guess he ain't...
Those are never good things. Mr. Simpson?
Yeah, I know it's out of order, but, um... One of the things that they did in Marham that seemed to work really well, especially with property that belonged to the city, they actually had them carry some paint in the cars so that they could cover over the stuff and then go back and take care of it. And it's something that they did... Chief, you could probably check with the police chief down there and see how they did it. But for several years, it worked really fast, and it really helped with the gang signs coming down. They couldn't do it on private property, but on property that belonged to the city, it could be squelched immediately.
Just keep your eyes open and bring it to our attention if you see anything. Any other citizens comments? Charles?
I want you to follow up on what Anne said about the CID. This is the map that was in the package online. And I looked at it, and I couldn't tell whether it was coming through downtown or not. So, it would be helpful if we could get some clarification.
You know, the... In order, and William, correct me if I'm wrong, because we've had a couple of meetings with this fellow about the CID. I believe that in order for an area to be brought in, it has to be contiguous. They can hopscotch over one parcel of that?
It has to be contiguous. And it is my understanding that they are not affecting anything in the downtown. And Gerald will be here.
Tonight?
Tonight. I requested, we'll put it this way, I requested that he come, and he...
He's usually a good guy.
...to be on the agenda, so I imagine you could address your questions directly to him. It is our understanding that none of those areas you're concerned about are contiguous.
Because it was... Right, it was never our desire for the downtown.
It's certainly conceivable to me that they can draw the lines, and they won't have to be contiguous, but to cover...
We've made that point clear on more than one occasion.
Because I couldn't tell by that map either, because I brought it up.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments, Laura?
Are we allowed to stay here?
Since I kept buying here tonight...
Can you hear?
We'll wait to formalize it.
Speak up, can you? I understand that Joe Folds would like to be the representative of the CID. And I think he's all great, well and good, except that Porsche America is in Atlanta. And if we are going to have a representative, I think they should be from Haightville. Just for the fact that he is in Atlanta. So, that's something to consider too. And yes, the map is extremely hard to read, but if you look at the property that was signed off on, it looks like you got Porsche America, and then you've got the Delta properties down at the end. So, everything on South Central looks to be in it. So, you might want to make sure. But I was much earlier...
It's up to the property owners. That's one thing I've got to clarify. Everybody wants us to stop the CID. We don't have the power to.
The boundaries in the map.
I understand.
From the 75% which you're supposed to have on this little list of the property owners, it looks to be on more central. It's hard to read the map, but from this, it looks that it's...
Well, hopefully, we can get our, uh, questions clarified tonight.
And as far as a representative for Haightville, I would prefer that a Haightville person represent us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, uh, comments or questions? There may not, and we will, uh, get into an informal discussion of our agenda items for the, uh, 7 o'clock meeting. The first item we have tonight under de-visance in our 7 p.m. meeting is a first reading ordinance, 2016-14. This is an extension. It says alcohol extension of... Actually, it's an extension on our alcohol ordinance for some changes that we had made affecting microbrewery operations that would expire on June 30, 16. So, we have a first reading tonight. We were hoping to have a rewrite done of our alcohol ordinance by this time, but we've had quite a few things going on, so we haven't gotten to that yet. So, we need to extend that to allow the microbrewery to, uh... Continue their operation with the modifications that we had made for them before. And also, on that same thing, counsel, we all need to keep on our radar screen, uh, that we want to have... We need to have a workshop. They're recommending that July 19th to July 26th for us to workshop the alcohol ordinance, so we can kinda get the attorneys marching down a path on the revised alcohol ordinance that takes into account some of these things that weren't taken into account when our original ordinance was written. Also, 2016-15 is a, uh... The extended stay moratorium. The moratorium was reestablished on May the 5th. Staff has modified the ordinance to take into account the comments made at the first reading. So, currently, the proposed ordinance would allow, continue to allow extended stays in the C2, general commercial zone. To limit extended stay on thousands permitted to use the CR and render the use subject to special permit, special use permit process in RNU and prohibit extended stay in the UV or in a residential lot. So, I think that took into account the things that were raised as concerns. I'll have any questions or comments on that.
One thing I remember was, we had, uh, somebody mentioned that we had, currently had two, and somebody said that we should put a limit on to five. So, that would be three additional new extended stay. I don't see that in here.
That's correct, and staff is continuing to work on the ordinance. This is just, you know, the moratorium.
Those are you are, so this is two.
Yeah, this is just...
Very important, the moratorium.
Okay. And then we'll bring the actual real ordinance for 19th. Okay. All right, you want to kind of walk them through the process? We've... This is a little complicated, because it's been taken several times.
Right.
Destiny will walk through.
Good evening.
Good evening. Home close.
Today, the... Today is only consideration of an extension of the moratorium. But the ordinance itself is going to planning commission next week. It's coming here for first read on the 21st, and then the second reading and final public hearing will be, I believe, July 19th. So, only thing we're talking about today is the words.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wasn't clear the way that, uh, consideration was worked. Absolutely.
William, on this, can we just make it where we add one and where we need another? We talk about that one? Do we have to even open the door for three? I don't know if we have the need for it.
Whatever you or the planning commission recommends, we're good with it. We're just trying to make sure that we...
Well, I think the way people would be more comfortable if we had total control on the way it grows. Right now, the one we're talking about, as far as I know, is basically over there next to East Point. There's no residents around it at all. And so, if we allow for one, we can get moving on that and reap the benefits of having something that I think would have a use without wondering what else we're opening. And I think that, it's just my opinion on that, that that might cause a little more comfort in my opinion.
Whatever you all want to do.
Well, it's just my opinion, so I don't know if it's all or not.
What do you think, Anna?
Um, I defer to the planning commission, and, um, hopefully they'll take that, for those who are here, take that under consideration.
Well, I defer too. I just hope people want to know that. I'm fine with it if we limit it down.
Yeah, the limit's a... The limit's a good idea, it's just...
We can always open it up if we need more. So, that's all.
And then we have Resolution 2016-05, surplus fire equipment. Staff discussing council on some occasions needs surplus on decent fire equipment. 1995 international analyst potential buyers made an offer $3,000. After further reviews, that place is fair offer and recommends acceptance. However, council wishes this item to be placed on God deals as best quality present measures opposed to apparatus. Anybody got any issue, questions, or concerns with that? All right, and then the item, uh, next item, item 8, uh, for is consideration action to enter into a letter of agreement with Kaboom. And this is for the design and build of a playground for the master park in the amount of $8,500. And to offer the, authorize, mirror, sign all necessary documents. We had a, a long conference call the other day with Kaboom Grant Agency. They want the cities to be part of the, of the, uh, grants that they give, because they're giving, what is it, $25,000 worth of equipment?
Yeah, approximately thirty.
Thirty thousand. So, they want the city, they want the city to have some skin in the game. These are, are big PR things too, because they're quite well known for doing this. But they, as Anne said, Anne raised it a moment ago, they want the buy-in of the community, both financially, but they want your sweat equity involved too, and your volunteers. They want families with kids to come out and be a part of it. So, there will be a lot of organization that needs to take place. So, this just gets the ball rolling with that. This is not a guarantee, because they, we haven't officially been selected. Correct?
Yes, that just gets us through to the next round, if you want to be considered, or if you have.
Comments now, or when it comes up?
Go ahead.
Well, Anne, I've looked at this, and it's about a 20-page document, and I read all of it. Okay, skimmed some, but nowhere in it did I find where they pay anything, where there's any amount. We do all of the work, we do all the pre-stuff, we have all the volunteers, we pay for all the food, we have all the liability, we put in the $8,500. I didn't see anything in those pages that said Kaboom, or whatever they call their partner puts in, anything. There's nothing in writing about that.
I have a $35,000...
Where is that? I don't see that in there.
Um, it is in the application instructions. It may not be in the letter of intent, but it is in the application instructions and in the whole program review.
And, and, and that says that the dollar value of the equipment, so they're providing only the equipment?
In the design services. And it will be a minimum of $24,000 and a maximum of $40,000.
Okay. So, um... All right, well, I don't know. I, I still think, you know, our guys could probably do it for $6,000 and, uh...
If the last two GMA's...
We don't have all of the, uh, all of the, you know, technical and legal hoops to jump through. That's just my opinion.
Are you saying you don't want to see the project?
Uh, I would rather see the thing in writing in the documents that I have, uh, that says that what they will provide.
Well, we're just... We're just following the grant process.
Okay.
This is not, this is a letter of intent. It is not a commitment.
Yeah, not a contract, yeah.
Okay.
We don't go to the next round, and we don't sign the letter.
Okay, so...
And quite frankly, it's a privilege for a city to be able to...
You know, maybe they got a bunch more money in the bank than us.
The last two years of GMA, I looked at equipment, because we sorely need it, and I was just shocked how expensive it is. And so, to me, I mean, of course, I'd love to see a drawing of what it is, but...
And that will be part of the process.
I'm sure that'll come, but I sure wouldn't want to turn it down from only $8,500. Yes, sir, sweat equity, but we can do that.
That's it?
All right. Uh, then we talked earlier about the CID expansion. Hopefully, uh... Our man will be here tonight for us to ask the, the appropriate questions. You know, the CID, from some, for some people, kind of, gets perceived as a bad rap, but at the Aerotropos meetings that I've been attending, CID is very, very popular amongst the big property owners because of the benefits that they're getting. But I, as I've stated before, for the cities that don't do the kind of things, the projects that we do, CID's are more beneficial for other people than they might be for us, just because of the investments they were already making. That some places have to have CID's to get that same kind of return. So, I'm comfortable with the CID if people want to voluntarily be a part of it. As I stated, the city has little control over whether or not individual property owners want to join that effort. But we have encouraged on multiple occasions that they, that they bypass the downtown, just because of the current economy. And I mean, for example, even Hilton, Hilton's very much in favor of the CID, but they just got hit with a reassessment on their property in Fulton County. They've got some improvement projects they're doing over there. We just hit them with a one-mill tax for the fire equipment, uh, the high-rise, uh, special tax district that we hit them for. So, as the manager and I have discussed, it's, it's a great, great thing. It's just bad timing. So, even a company like that that would be perceived as a company that would eagerly join in CID, they're not interested at this cycle, uh, just because of their current economic situation. So, any questions or comments on CID?
Yes. Um, as I looked up in the Fulton County Tax Assessors Code, um, according, as I can see it, there are six properties in the 3-0 tax district. And those are four, Delta Airlines. Uh, one is Digital Doug Davis LLC. I believe that is the FlightSem building on Doug Davis Drive, and then the Wells Fargo building. Now, altogether, uh, these six entities paid, uh, Haightville 400, excuse me, $745,000 in taxes last year. And, and my experience and my knowledge of the CID, um, and also those Delta buildings are not contiguous. Um, obviously, Doug Davis Drive is not contiguous, so there's no contiguousness at all in these six Haightville properties. And, and, and in my experience, what I have garnered from CID, the, the benefits, the main benefit that, uh, businesses want, is, you know, a big, uh, crossing dime... that businesses want is, you know, a big crossing diamond that might go in at Camp Creek or, you know, wayfinding, beautification, and increased security. And, you know, my counter to that is, if we've got little security cars riding around, who are they going to call? They're going to call our cops or our firemen who will be there in two minutes anyway. I think hateville has the best fire and police of any of the metropolitan area cities. And I believe, even though I think it says, you know, you know, we won't have to pony up and all of that, I can't imagine why Delta wants to pay five, five mills more in taxes. I just don't get it, to have security and maybe beautification, I don't get it. But then I don't know if anybody from our city has called them and asked them what they see as a benefit that we don't provide as a city.
We're not involved.
The CID's are individual property owners. The city has no.
Right, but they, these entities pay taxes to the city.
Right.
So we might contact them.
They pay them to the county, and we get, you know, we have a portion of the total tax bill. And again, we're not involved, this is a state statute, and Mr. McDowell will be here. We can ask him those questions.
Yeah, hopefully.
But I was going to say, just, you know, from my experience, and I've done several of those CID meetings and the things that, and well additionally, when I asked Mr. McDowell to give me the financials for, I guess, the first year since inception, seventy-five percent, I believe between sixty and seventy-five percent was administration. You know, so again, if we are required as a city to have you sign something, I would, at some point, I will vote no.
I have to see what.
Yeah, I want to be as polite as I can as a person, but I'd like to know if there's a way to just downright say no to downtown. If there's a way to protect that, you know, if there is, great. I thought that College Park had done that, and if they did, then I want to know how and do the same. What other people want to do with their money? It seems strange to me, because my understanding was hard to get Delta to sign off on the medians we did for them, and finally, we just did it anyway because they never did sign off. So now they're all excited about spending millions on what? So I'm intrigued, but I know we're not in control of it. But I'd like to control the no for downtown if we can.
All right. And that is all of the agenda we had at seven p.m. Next item we have for our work session agenda is discussion of fireworks regulations. In the last session of the Georgia Legislature, changes are made previously adopted fireworks laws allowing local governments the opportunity to regulate the time and place for using fireworks in local communities and celebrations. Since various council members have inquired about this matter, a memo outlining the information and options of a recently passed law has been prepared by the city attorney's office. Given our location near the International Airport and the upcoming holiday, July the fourth, staff wanted to know which direction, if any, the council wanted to move towards the regulation regarding the placement or greater restrictions on the use of fireworks here in Hayville. Staff is prepared to brief you and provide various options council wishes to enact stricter rules as provided under the new law. I think one of the things that the new law allows is up to 1:00 a.m. discharge of fireworks on Fourth of July and New Year's Eve. However, I was rather surprised that on Memorial Day over in my neighborhood, there was somebody about nine o'clock at night to set the start shooting off a bunch of fireworks. So I think that if you read the memorandum from Destiny, one of the things that House Bill seven twenty-seven allows is consumer fireworks may only be ignited until nine p.m. on any other day other than New Year's Day and Fourth of July, no, I'm sorry, midnight. New Year's Day until one a.m., midnight on New Year's Eve and third and fourth of July. So the nine p.m. is something I'd be very interested in. Y'all have any comments or questions for Destiny or William?
Can we say only on those holidays? Can we say only igniting fireworks on the prescribed days that you have in here? Third of July, Fourth of July, New Year's Eve, New Year's Day, only those? Do we have to say any other day from nine to midnight? Do we eliminate those other days altogether?
No, the state, the state regulates which days you can ignite fireworks later than, later than nine o'clock. Well, it regulates every, all of the times, but it says that only on these thirty days you cannot ignite fireworks. You can't ignite fireworks after nine p.m. The only thing that the city can do is extend that time between nine and twelve on any other day over here. So today, today is July the seventh. The mayor and council can say, okay, we want to allow on June the seventh, you can pop fireworks until ten o'clock. That's, we can just, we can move within that nine to twelve time period on any day that's not restricted by the state. And we could also make it subject to a special use permit. So you can also say, if you have a special use permit, you can pop fireworks between nine and twelve on July, on June the seventh. So we only have that wiggle room between that time period.
Diane, I want to be clear, were you trying to say we wanted, it seemed to me that she was asking, can we cut it out of other days? And it sounds like the answer is all we can do is give more grace and not really give a restriction. Is that correct?
Right.
Well, there were no restrictions.
Well, I understand, well, for most of my life, but, you know.
Anne, I see on here it's every other day in the calendar up until nine o'clock, and that's no more firecrackers. And then on the prescribed days, New Year's Eve, New Year's Day, it can be until, I guess the state is saying, one a.m. And can we be like till midnight or are you good with one a.m. on those prescribed days?
If we can trump this, this thing.
It's, it's one a.m. only on New Year's Day. Every other day is.
Every other day is midnight.
Okay.
And the rest of the time's not d.m.
Right.
Have they had, do they have anything in it about what type of fireworks? I mean, have we been sending up rockets right next to runways until nine o'clock at night? Seriously, I mean, is there any restriction on what type?
Well, there are two different, there are consumer fireworks, which are the fireworks that you would get at a fireworks stand, and then there are fireworks, the professional fireworks, I'm sorry, the professional fireworks that are used in these professional displays. Those are not available, those fireworks are not available to anybody to purchase, but the consumer fireworks are available to everybody to purchase and, and to use as well within those time periods. Does that make the?
Yeah. I sent this on to William, and I don't know if he already had it anyway, because I read it on Nextdoor, or somebody mentioned it, and I was thankful for that, passed it along. The problem I have is I keep reading on Nextdoor, I heard gunshots, did anybody else? And the reality is, on TV and in movies, gunshots sound really big, but in reality, some of them aren't. There ain't much difference between a firecracker and a gunshot, and so it's confusing. How many times you've heard about them all shooting when people thought it was just fireworks? So to me, it's very unnerving to have it going off here and there, but I guess we're stuck with some of it, but I want to restrict it as much as possible.
Well, and I think the other thing we hear on Nextdoor is animals should run off because they're scared. And I think by restricting the till one a.m., you know, that's going to, and if we can get all of this in our newsletter, maybe folks will know to have their dogs, you know, inside during firework hours. But, you know, on those days that we can anticipate fireworks, otherwise, you know, it's going to be nine p.m. I don't know that we can be any tighter than nine p.m., can we?
We cannot.
Cannot.
So would, would you like them to proceed then with an ordinance that would contemplate basically the recommendations that are to mirror the state law?
Yes.
Do you want the special use permit in there in case for the hundred-and-twenty-fifth, for example?
Sure.
That is, Apple something may come up where we wanted to have a, bring in a company to do fireworks or something.
Yeah. Yeah, we could, if we're hearing, okay, mirror the state statute, that's good. Special event or special permit.
Right.
We need that direction. And then the last question I wanted to ask and make sure is that, would you like for us to tie this in terms of reference back to the noise ordinance? Because it's kind of tough on the police when they go out there. You know, they need to make sure that rules are consistent. We don't want to have the noise ordinance saying one thing and then this other law saying something else. So we would recommend that we tie the two together.
I would agree with that. Destiny, in, in process of preparing this, will you make sure we have no conflicts with our noise ordinance? Or if we need to make any modifications to ours or noise ordinance to contemplate this, that we tie them together at the same time?
Yes, and we, I talked with the representative of the police department today, not you, but.
Right, pretend you're.
Yes. So he notified me that the current time that loud noises have to stop is at ten o'clock. So he recommended that maybe we move that down to nine, since fireworks would be a loud noise, and we should move that down to nine to be more consistent with state law. You don't have to, but it would be helpful because fireworks would be considered a loud noise that would be regulated by that ordinance, so that's something we could also do.
But William, your point seems to be that on those other two days, that they can go beyond the ten o'clock by law, and that that needs to be considered? Is that correct?
Yes, and again, the way the noise ordinance is written, it's, I think, what's the term? Unusual noise? And that's things like construction or other things like that, no worries. We're just trying to make music, stuff like that, we're just trying to make sure that the rules are clarified so that when our staff is out in the field, they have clear guidance on when they can say, okay, you can't do that, and when, you know, the, the other state statutes and rules that kick in and say, that's okay.
Right.
We need a cutoff point, and I think nine o'clock works for us. And like Destiny said, the fireworks fall into a category that we could break from.
And another thing I wanted to add is that you also have the authority to zone temporary fireworks stands and then fireworks freestanding permanent fireworks stores. And also the fire department has the authority to issue licenses to temporary fireworks stands. So that can be something that can be covered in the ordinance as well.
Are they prohibited now?
Uh, state, state law.
There's no rules.
There's no rules.
There's no rules. So the question is, do you want, when you were saying mirror the state statute, Destiny's pointing out that it, you know, has these other provisions, do you want us to also pick those up and incorporate them, or is that something you're not concerned about?
I think we should be concerned about, because if we don't have any rules, we can't say no.
Can we say no to all of them? Stands and whatever?
Well, they, they have to be allowed somewhere because the state doesn't allow the, the city to interfere when the sale of personal fireworks. They have to be allowed somewhere, and working with the city plan, we can determine.
But next to the adult bookstore.
That's exactly.
We have to have adult entertainment and fireworks.
That'd be my preference.
We discussed a special overlay that would only tie to the C-one district. Is that right, Bill?
Yes.
Yeah. So it's just the, this little corner of the city up near East Point in that area.
I gotta get a drink.
So I assume we'll, y'all will workshop this and come back with us with some recommendations?
Yes, we just needed to make sure we got your direction, and I think Destiny had one other point that was covered by the state statute. We just wanted to run by you. Okay, the timing, do you need this like immediately before Fourth of July, or can we just bring it back to you as soon as we get it done?
I think as soon, I'm, I'm good for whatever that gives time. You know, there are other things to deal with, and by, just by us passing this, it gonna stop people from shooting them off, it's just gonna create an enforcement line there for us anyway, so. But at least we'll have some teeth.
Okay, and process-wise, do you want this to go back through the planning commission and to you, or do you want it to just come back to you?
The planning commission.
For the zoning, I guess, the zoning piece.
Right.
And commission, and then the noise piece for us. I know it's not going to be together, but.
So we'll just run it back through them, back to you.
Right.
If there's no urgency in terms of doing it before the Fourth of July, I think we have time to do this.
I don't, I mean, I don't see that it's going to solve anything if we do it before the Fourth of July.
No.
It's just, like I say, it's just going to create enforcement issues and we'll deal, we'll deal with those in due time, so.
But you mentioned moving it to nine o'clock. Is that just a thought or is that a change? Because that's a huge change if we're actually changing that from ten o'clock to nine o'clock.
For the rest of the noise ordinance?
Yeah, I just didn't want that to pass along.
Segregate fireworks in there? In the noise ordinance, can we separate fireworks out?
Yes. Because we have some events that go to ten o'clock, and that changes things.
That's why I want the clarification.
That's why I brought it back up.
I think, I think if we can, if we can segregate fireworks.
Correct.
In the noise ordinance, then, because of, you know, there, there are events that go on that could, that could potentially run up to ten o'clock.
Exactly. We had the same discussion today.
We can make gunfire twenty-four hours a day.
You got it.
All right. And the next item we have, any, any other things of our, next item we have is a discussion of our five-year technology plan with Liberty Technology, so.
It's basically, part of the contract that Liberty Technology was awarded included a performance provision, which was a deliverable of making sure we had, they provided to us a five-year technology plan, because I was really concerned about where we were with our technology and how we could afford to upgrade it. That was the first question. The second question was basically a technical question, what do you buy first, second, third, fourth? I mean, you know, you have to have a plan. I've been involved in many frustrating conversations over the years where this vendor is blaming that vendor that this won't integrate or talk to that one. And we can't, you know, waste time and energy on those kinds of conversations. We want to have the best integrated technology platform that we can. So with those two goals and objectives in mind, that's why they were tasked with producing this document, and they worked diligently on it, and we've had a lot of conversation. And so we're ready now for them to present the plan to you, get your reaction to it, and basically any tweets or comments or questions. And then we want to memorialize this in a document that will guide the staff in terms of making technology investments. As I indicated last night, step number one is already included in the budget, should you so desire. It's ready to go. But then, of course, what happens the next year and the next? And that's where the technology plan guides us on which way we need to go. So with that, I'll turn it over to our friend with.
Mayor, Mayor and Council, thank you for allowing us to present to you this evening.
Give me your name, please.
Yes, I'm sorry. My name's Stephen Leese. I'm the general manager with Liberty Technology, and my colleague Doug Stewart is also up here with me, who I think pretty much most of the staff know quite well from him being up here on a regular basis. Okay, so as William has mentioned, there are certain goals in mind that we were tasked with. Yes, sorry. Okay, sorry about that. That there are certain goals in mind that we were given in front of the integrated plan. What we've done in this plan is we've tried to structure of where were you before we came onboard, what's happened since we've been onboard, and where are we going? Basic planning on that. So first, let's just take a quick look on what's been done to date, so you have some idea of what has been happening. When we came in, there's a lot of issues that were going on. Basically, your systems were down repeatedly. There's a lot of email history that was lost, and without trying to sound too critical, you know, of previous efforts, in a sense, in essence, you had a pretty inefficient IT support model. So we tried to come in and at least remedy a lot of those situations from the beginning. I'm just kind of giving you, they say a picture sets a thousand words. This is kind of your before of your IT room. We'll get to the after, improved a little bit since then. We'll get to the after, improve it a little bit since then. Since the time we came onboard, this is kind of gives you a little bit of statistics. I like numbers, and I guess probably not surprised with being in I.T., right? But this kind of shows you what we've been working on in terms of numbers, how we have a pretty steady number of tickets coming in from the employees on a monthly basis. I'm just kind of pointing out that, you know, we have, you know, obviously, there's always room for improvement, but we're staying at least on average above the ninety percent of resolving your issues within a service level agreement. So there's some times where the issues are a little more complex and may take more time, but in general, we're able to resolve most of the issues, you know, within anywhere from seven to nine hours. The first month, of course, there's an onboarding process, you know, where we get everything set up, so that does take a little bit longer. And just kind of a year-to-date total here, we've had at least a hundred and seventy-two cases that we've closed for you. There's been some, of course, that have been canceled, and we saw a few that were in progress at the month's end with May. Spent over three hundred and fifty hours so far to date, you know, providing support to the city. As I mentioned, the median resolution time to date has been about seven hours. But again, you know, there's still always room for improvement, and we're always looking to find ways to improve. The eighty-nine percent result within S.L.A., of course, considers the January number as well. So with that, you know, we'll kind of go ahead and jump into the actual technology plan itself. Basically, we'll give you the highlights, the goals and targets. We structured it in a certain way where we provide what your current environment is, you know, what the issues are, you know, to kind of set the framework of, you know, why are we looking at this? Then set forth the goals and objectives that we would like to see the city achieve with this, and then try to also identify the benefits, so we have a clear reason of why we're doing this. I mean, it's always important to understand why you're doing something, of course. Of course, the other issue to keep in mind is, we're talking about five years. I think it would be no surprise to anyone that technology's probably gonna change a lot in five years, it's changed a lot in the past five years, it's gonna change a lot more in the next five years. So as we're going through this, the first year is, of course, the most detailed, because you have the less unknown variables in progress. As you go through it, you know, the details, we still focus on specific issues, the details may become less and less clear because of the, it's the lack of knowledge of, you know, we have at this point in time of what may be happening. So we have designed this to try to be as adaptable as possible to any kind of technological changes that may come forth. And keeping in mind too, that any costs that you see at the end of this, we're having to base the estimates right now on the current cost. Cost in I.T., you know, can go up or down depending on the new technology that's introduced. You know, if you have a technology that's been out there for a longer period of time, cost generally tends to come down. But of course, that may change due to innovations in the lifecycle, and we, throughout the entire process, we've tried to look at what the city's goal is, and we look at the visioning savings that have been set forth, and try to keep it in the context of what the city itself wants to achieve, and to really strive for excellence in service. So the first year, we're gonna basically try to get the city up to where it needs to be, and that's the core infrastructure improvements. Second year is really focused on some communications transformation improvements, which will do a lot with connectivity and communications. On year three, we see, by that point, I want you to get the VESA issues taken care of. You can move on to more complex issues like your security system modernization and for your buildings throughout, throughout the municipality. Year four, since right now you're in fairly good shape when it comes to cellular communications, let's start evaluating cellular communications improvements. And then on year five, this is really looking at some other loose ends to tie up, no pun intended, where we're talking about cable management improvements, then essentially starting the process all over again, looking at, okay, what have we accomplished? How's the thing, how have things gone according to plan? What hasn't gone according to the plan? And then start looking at the ongoing replacement planning. Okay, so before we really get into the full plan, just what we have been able to do so far is we've been able to get some very old computers up to date. There's about sixteen right now. We've updated some air cards in the public safety, getting them from three G to four G, so which meant faster speed, but also at less cost. So we've been able to get the city a savings of at least twelve dollars per card per month, and also in some negotiations, we've identified six thousand dollars in savings per month with AT&amp;T. And we've also made a few improvements in the I.T. room as well. Okay, so again, just kind of set the high of the goals quickly for you. First year is really, as I mentioned, is focusing on infrastructure, so we, you have very old servers here. You have some issues with email that I think the city officials are probably quite aware of. We wanna look at just updating the general network infrastructure and the access points and devices that people are using. Look at an Internet Service Provider service review, so we can get higher speeds and better connectivity for the city. But also, we wanna look at business critical things such as backup and disaster recovery planning, which is really, obviously, it's, you know, that's something that's critical in today's age, 'cause if you lose your data and you lose your operating system, you basically are unable to function. And a very specialized, I'm sorry, very specialized project is to look at, right now, this city has been looking at, trying to get this open gov project, which is allowing more insight from the citizens into budgeting, is there is a program that can help connect the city's existing financial systems with this open gov, that makes it a little bit easier, and then really start on refreshing the PCs and laptops, which has already started. Okay, so right now, you know, the existing environment, as I mentioned, you have a lot of old equipment in there, and that has a huge risk of failure and creating downtime. The servers that are running, you know, there's already one that's, there's no support for it, so if anything happens, you can't call Microsoft to get any extended support for it. There's another server that's already not extended support, which means it's kind of, you know, one foot in the grave, so to speak. So what we wanna do is look at a, taking these physical servers and do what's called a virtual server system, and we can go into more technical details on that if you're interested, but this will create a lot of efficiencies. Right now, the traditional architecture, we're not giving a lot of detail, is, you know, you have these separate servers, and in this, you would try to consolidate things into one virtualized server, which gives you a lot more efficiency and allows you to back things up much more quickly as well, too. As I mentioned, you have more flexibility if we go that route, and also you can allocate resources much better, and then also keeping in cost in mind, it's an ongoing issue, is this would minimize the need to purchase additional hardware for the city. The other goal is to try to, you know, migrate the city's existing email, which right now is all based, is housed internally, and that creates a problem, because if this server goes down, then basically the city's without given communications. So they'll lose data, and there's a, well, at least there's a huge risk of losing data, and no one will basically be able to work. So what we're suggesting, and this is pretty much the trend across the board for anyone who's keeping up with I.T., is to move to cloud-based services, which Microsoft does offer, so their Microsoft Office three sixty-five in the cloud. And this will allow, in addition to eliminating that single point of failure that was mentioned, it basically allows a lot of improved connectivity, because, you know, then you can access it with any device that you need, whether it's your mobile phone, whether it's your laptop, your home PC if you need to connect and to work. And then the other aspect of it is on the disaster recovery side, is if there's an outage, you know, you basically still can have uninterrupted access, because it's not housed internally. And I know that's a little bit short on time, so please, if I'm going too fast...
Sorry, D.R.
Yeah, okay. All right, trying to make sure that I'm not running out of time here, but I'll keep it slow. Okay, and then there's the other aspect, is the network infrastructure. So that's like your access points, that's your wireless connectivity throughout the buildings and from building to building as well. The last update has been quite some time, seven years is a long time in I.T., and the suggested replacement is normally around a five-year period. So obviously, as age goes on, you see a likelihood of failure also happening with that. Just, this is just for information, if, there's two aspects of your, your infrastructure, there's network switches, which provide connectivity between your servers, your PCs, your laptop, and then there's routers, which connect everything else to the external environment. So it's kind of a graph to give you some idea about the likelihood of failure as time goes on. So what we're suggesting is looking at this whole integration, so that you don't run into problems in the future of things not cooperating with each other, is looking at the Cisco Meraki hardware as the replacement solution.